Good morning, everyone. It is eleven thirty-three, Monday, November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two, and I am calling to order the virtual special meeting of the Los Angeles Probation Oversight Commission. My name is Frankie Carrillo, and I'm the Chair of the Commission. Now Wendy Julian, our Executive Director, will explain how you can participate during this meeting, and then Wendy, please take the roll.
Okay, great. Thank you, and welcome to our special meeting. We encourage public participation today, and you can make your comments live here at this meeting or in writing. There'll be a chance for you to make public comment on each agenda item today, and even though it's a special meeting, we will do general public comment at the end for items not on the agenda. For each item on the agenda, Chair Carrillo will introduce the item, we'll hear the presentation, and then we'll take public comment before the Commission discusses or takes any action on the item. The best way to make a comment is to use the Raise Your Hand function. You click on the little hand icon at the bottom of your screen, at least that's how it looks on my screen. If you're on the phone, you may have to click on the More Options button, the three little dots, to give you the raise hand, or you may have to click on the Reactions button. If you're on the phone, you can also make a public comment live. You just dial star three, and that raises your hand and puts you in the queue, and I will call on you based on your phone number. Everybody will have two minutes today unless Chair Carrillo determines otherwise based on the number of commenters. If you'd rather make your comment in writing, please send us an email to info@poc.lacounty.gov. Janay is going to put that email in the chat. Please do not send your public comment in the chat. Only the host sees it, and it won't be locked, it won't be logged as public comment since the chat function doesn't comport with our Brown Act responsibilities. We are broadcasting live today to our Facebook page. You can watch the meeting now or later on Facebook, but there's no engagement with users there. You can also follow our social media accounts on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram at LACountyPOC for more information about our meetings, and you can invite other people to attend. Also, you can find the information to apply to become a Commissioner, which will be available at those sites soon. We also have launched a YouTube account where you can watch recaps, recordings of our meetings, and special videos. If you'd like to make... All right, so I think we are set. I'm going to call the roll. Commissioners, please unmute yourselves. Commissioner Canales?
Hello, good morning. Here.
Good morning. Commissioner Dupuy?
Here.
Thank you, and Commissioner Dupuy has let me know she's also having some internet issues, is going to stay off camera here. Commissioner Garcia-Lays? Commissioner Jackson, I am expecting, and we'll let you know Chair Carrillo when she joins. Commissioner Lewis, I believe, is not with us today. Commissioner Meredith? Oh, I don't see Commissioner Meredith. Okay, I am expecting Commissioner Meredith, so I'll let you know when he arrives. Commissioner Nong?
Morning present.
And Chair Carrillo?
I'm also here. Thank you, Wendy.
Great, thank you. We do have quorum, and I will turn it over to you.
Yes, yes. Now we will proceed with the agenda for today. Item number two is your approval of October twenty-seventh's meeting minutes. Do we have any written public comments or live public comments for item number two, Wendy?
We do not.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion to approve October twenty-seventh's minutes?
Move to approve the minutes.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Garcia-Lays and second by Commissioner?
Second.
Commissioner Nong, thank you. Are there any changes to the minutes? Okay, hearing none, Commissioners, please unmute yourselves and vote what they've always voted. Aye?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, moving on to item number three. We will discuss and take appropriate action on two thousand and twenty-two facility inspection of campus Page, Afroball, and Rocky, which is attached in the agenda. Dr. Reynoso Bonozias, please proceed with this item.
Thank you, Chair Carrillo. I have some slides that I'll wait for them to come up so we could follow along with my report. Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you, Commissioners, for allowing me this space to present to you on the facility inspections for our East camps, which include camps Afroball, Page, and Rocky. So if you don't mind, I'll just dive in here with next slide, please. We're talking about the inspections related to Afroball and Page first. So this slide is just to give you a little recap, reminder of the methodology that is used for the POC inspections. They are on an annual basis, which means that approximately twelve months to the time each inspection is done for the year. This, these inspections for Afroball and Page were conducted in August. Three Commissioners conducted the inspections. The POC staff, including myself, our Executive Director, and Management Analyst, provided support to the Commissioners on these inspections. And part of the methodology, too, is that distinction between, let's say, the BSCC conducting their inspections and our POC inspections, although we do have a multivariate focus. Our inspections do not go in depth as the BSCC ones, looking at fire codes, building maintenance, et cetera. So just keep that in mind. Also, a snapshot of the day of the inspection is captured. So that's the information that's being presented to you here and will be presented in the final reports, which are shared with our entire Commission as well as our probation partners. Next slide, please. So, sorry, just to mention also that the inspections themselves are based on the Commissioners' observations and the staff and youth interviews. So that's what you will see in the final report. A snapshot of Camp Page shows us that for the day, we had twenty youth in total population there at the time of the inspection. There were fifty-six peace officers, active DPOs, DPO-ones, DPO-twos, and GSNs, group supervisor nights, working with this population. The staff-to-youth ratio for the day and for the night were two to one. There were no, within the twelve-month period, there were no attempted suicides nor escapes or documented attempts at Camp Page. Next slide, please. So Commissioner notes for Page. As you'll see, that I will also go into some themes that were denoted through the inspections, highlighting some of the more important ones that then will lead to questions for the department. But for Page here, the morning of the inspection, POC was alerted that the camp might be entering a quarantine status due to a positive test by a probation staff who worked that prior night. So the Commissioners conducting this inspection took extra, extra precautions going in to conduct this inspection. And just major issues and themes there included appliance issues regarding the dishwasher, washing machine, and oven that either were inoperable or in need of repair. So just to note that these major concerns were immediately communicated to probation leadership, and they responded very timely that day to these issues. Next slide, please. Other notes here included prominent drug usage that was reported by staff who witnessed youth seeming to be under the influence, including in classrooms and in the dorm. And this report was given by several staff members to the Commissioners. Youth, through interviews with youth, it revealed that there were varied treatment and ways of interacting among staff with them. They did note that there were a couple of POs that really listened to them, that were fair, took the time to establish good relationships with them, and didn't just order them around. And there were other youth that reported the opposite. So there's the notation here of some differential ways of approaching relationships in their work. One Commissioner noted that staff uniformly lack sufficient training and oversight regarding the necessity of forming positive relationships with the youth. And I'll say a little bit more about that when it comes to looking at some of the questions that will be posed to the department. Next slide, please. Camp Afroball, the snapshot there, we, there were twenty-two youth, total population, the day of the inspection. Total peace officers working actively with these youth were forty-nine. Similar to the adjacent camp, the staff-to-youth ratios were two to one. No attempted suicides found in the last twelve months, but there was one escape or documented attempt of an escape. Next slide, please. So Commissioner notes and themes from the Afroball inspection. There were many classroom observations by the Commissioners, and again, many staff and youth interviews, including with administrators and partner agency staff. So highlighting here again is the increased drugs and weapons being smuggled in that were not only identified or shared as a concern by staff, but also by administrators. Lots of issues with heavy gang involvement were noted across the board throughout these interviews. Challenges with SEO coming into manage crisis, this was a concern that was shared by some staff with the Commissioners that, or our staff members, that the, the way that they engaged or handled the problems or the crisis for which they were called in typically escalated to violence happening in the camp. And finally, of note here, the need for programming, particularly for older youth, that might benefit from fire programs or trade programs. Next slide, please. So making a notation here so that I don't repeat each time that I report on one of the camps, that the partner agencies that serve youth do this in a, in a similar fashion with the JCHS and DMH offering services, seven days a week, early coverage through evening coverage, and both agencies offer twenty-four access to either the physicians, on-call physicians, or psychiatry. So here highlighted is just a little bit more detail about the service, but this is the case for Afroball, Page, and Rocky. Next slide, please. Okay, so inspection questions, I will run through them really quick. I don't want to take up too much time since this is the preview here for the Commissioners and will also be forwarded to the department. But the questions that derived from Afroball and Page include: Has a department considered adding signage on the trails, open areas around the facility to possibly deter potential contraband or unauthorized visitors? Number two is probation offering or facilitating supplemental training or classes for rapport and relationship building between line staff and youth? Number three, have the major appliance issues been resolved? We know that the leadership did give us, give the Commissioners specific work orders, so we know that these issues were being worked on, but just to follow up on these would be helpful. Has vocational or trade programming increased at either Camp Afroball or Page? And number five, will specialized tactical training related to adolescent development be provided? Or is it already being offered to SEOs? Next slide, please. Okay, so Camp Rocky, similar to the methods that I spoke about in the beginning, but this inspection occurred in October. Two POC Commissioners conducted the inspection. And just to note, we were a little bit delayed in, the POC was a little delayed in confirming that this inspection would take place, just because unfortunately, this camp suffered a lot of quarantines and outbreak statuses, so we had to keep pushing it back for the health and safety of the youth as well as everyone involved. So October is when it occurred, same model. The Commissioners conducted the inspections. POC staff supported the Commissioners in those inspections, and a snapshot was gathered of this day. Next slide, please. So for Rocky, the population, total population for the day was twenty-five. There were seventy-two active staff members who worked with the youth. The staff-to-youth ratios there were two to three for day and night, and zero attempted suicides, as well as zero escapes and documented attempts at Rocky for the last calendar year. Next slide, please. So there were a couple of really great highlights that I will share with you here from Camp Rocky. One of them, Commissioner pointed out that there was a checkpoint upon accessing entry to the camp with a uniformed DPO that was stationed there due to having an influx of contraband enter the camp in the recent past. So that's how they addressed that. And the Commissioner also was concerned about there being no signage to advise that you're coming up to a custodial facility. And there was some, some concerns with drone activity in the area in the past. Included here, aerial view of where the, the camp is located for your reference. Next slide, please. Okay, so for Rocky, some Commissioner notes and interview themes. Overall, the facilities, the facility was clean and well-maintained. There was an issue that was described as leaking water from an overhead air cooling system in the kitchen. And I'll say a little bit more when we get to the questions, but there was a concern that there was some moss or molding that was being created around this leak. There were several youth and staff who acknowledged a particularly exceptional DPO at this camp, who was described as a role model, regularly encourages youth and engages them in several sporting activities and events, track-and-field type of races, games. So this, this PO was highlighted quite a bit throughout the inspection. The credentialed culinary program was something also highlighted in which youth can participate and also begin to get their credentials. The Hope Center is currently, for your reference, is currently undergoing renovation on one side, but on the other side, there were five youth, two who were there from Camp Afroball, two from Camp Page, and one from Rocky. And I'll be saying a little bit more about what emerged out of the Hope Center. Next slide, please. So in the Hope Center, youth were observed to be attending class, virtual class mainly, but some were involved in textbook classwork. It was noted that they did not have desks. They were utilizing their, another chair to watch the laptop, which was of note here. Another issue that stemmed from the interviews and observations by the Commissioners was that although the Hope Center there is described as somewhat of a cooldown center, some youth and staff were regarding it being used more as a possible punishment, timeout kind of situation where youth were spending more time, prolonged periods of time there. Students didn't really seem to be engaged in the classrooms. Both Commissioners noted observing this, and youth reporting that, oh, computers are the best teachers at Rocky. This was of concern, and the reported high tensions in the recent past was also something that was concerning. However, both Commissioners reported that overall, the tone and the culture seems to be stable and pretty good at this time, or at the time of inspection. Next slide, please. So the inspection questions that derived from Camp Rocky are here. Again, back to that possible moss or mold from the, the leaky piece of kitchen equipment. Is there a work order in place to address the leaking air cooler in the kitchen? Does the department have a plan to incorporate credible messengers into the camp framework? How is the Hope Center being utilized by neighboring camps like Afroball and Page? And do you typically spend prolonged periods of time, as indicated by their home camps? As indicated by their home camps. Is there an identified graffiti prevention or graffiti removal program? This was something notated by one of the Commissioners that although there wasn't heavy graffiti throughout the camp, there were some recent, some recent graffiti detected in youth's mattresses. Next slide, please. And that is it. I tried to just point out the highlights, be brief, and open to questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Reynoso. Wendy, do we have any written or live public comments for this item?
We do, and I'll call in Aditi first once we get the timer up. But also, if anyone else would like to make a public comment, please use this time to click on the Raise Your Hand function, or if you're calling on the phone, you dial star three, and that will raise your hand. I will unmute you, Aditi, and you can begin.
Hi, Aditi Sharcar. Good morning, Children's Defense Fund, California. I just wanted to bring to the BSCC's attention and see if there's any discussion around the fact that it looks like Camp Rocky has been out of compliance for about two hundred days now for minimum regulations. This is based on a report that's on the BSCC's website. They will be discussing it at this Thursday's meeting. But it looks like, you know, according to the BSCC inspections, youth have been held in separation. I think that's the Hope Center, the room confinement with no extensions. The, it seems to be that a lot of the violations are around the Hope Center, and I wanted to know if that's something that the POC is aware of or monitoring. This is obviously not the first time that Los Angeles County probation has been out of compliance with the absolute minimum regulations, and I was hoping to hear a little more from the POC if they, if they are following this or what their views are. Thank you.
Thank you for that. That is the end of our public comment. I will say we have the link to the report that Aditi was just referring to, and I can send that to Janay to put it in the chat, and I'll turn it back over to you, Chair Carrillo.
Thank you, Wendy. Commissioners, it's time for us to chime in if you have any questions or comments. Dolores, I see your hand was up. Now it's back down. Would you like to speak? Okay, I think it's a no. Anyone else want to ask a question on this, on this issue? Well, folks are, are thinking about it. Dr. Reynoso, you, there was a, there was a, there was one attempted escape. Can you give me more about what that, what that looked like? Or what was it? Was there a report associated with that, or did they escape?
My understanding, it was an attempt. I don't have further detail about that, but I can get it to the Commissioners.
Thank you. Commissioner Canales, you're up.
Yes, I thank you, Commissioner Carrillo. I know it just, it seems, you know, so minute, but I was just wondering, in the report that we just heard, it was mentioned about graffiti on the mattresses, and I guess the Commissioner pointed that out, and it just, you know, goes along with some comments that I've heard some, from staff before about, like, you know, they write on everything and things like that. And, and I was just wondering, like, do they check the mattresses first, you know, to make sure so that somebody else doesn't get a blame, since this seems to be a concern? I just want to make sure that the youth aren't, like, getting falsely accused of writing on something that might have already been written on, especially since the Commissioner felt, you know, to put that in the report. That's my question. Are they checking them prior so that no one gets falsely accused?
Thank you. Commissioner Canales, we, we have our probation partner here, but as far as I know from the reporting, the Commissioner notated that it seemed, the ones on the mattresses seemed fresh between the years twenty-one, twenty-two, I guess denoting that there was some, some date aspect to that graffiti. And this happened to be in the mattresses in the Hope Center, is what I know. I don't know if Chief Fletcher wants to comment on any of the graffiti parts.
Thank you. So I think it is an ongoing problem in all of our institutions. Our young people are gaining access to pens and, and those kinds of writing instruments that sometimes get into their rooms. So our staff are pretty diligent about making sure that things are in order and will document. Certainly Bureau Chief Kaufman is on the line, who oversees our camps, that may have more detail to that. If Ms. Kaufman, if you'd like to chime in.
I'm actually not sure that, can you promote Ms. Kaufman to panelist, Janay, please? She has her hand raised. She has her hand raised. I can see her under attendees. There we go.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, great. Thank you. So our Management Services Bureau is also in partnership. They have a camp manager at the facility, and so they do regular inspections of all of the bedding, the walls, et cetera. We try to remove graffiti as soon as it happens, obviously, for obvious reasons, but some of the cleaning supplies that we have don't always enable us to do that because obviously, we're concerned about the health aspects of, of youth who would use them, or the staff as well. The graffiti usually is typically indicative of the gang that the youth may represent, and so that's how they would normally decide whether or not it was related to them. And then they will also have a conversation with them and do a security incident report, talk to the youth about it, and then try to address it through any type of restorative justice practices, like you indicated, doing graffiti removal. And also, you know, the youth has opportunity to have a discussion and appeal, any type of sanctions that would result, based on if, if they were observed doing that or if somebody thought that it was related to, to them doing so.
Um, thank you, and, you know, I see this as part of the problem. I see this as part of why probation does not work, because of the fact that, you know, even right now, you know, part of the gang. When I was younger and I was in the county jail, and I know this has nothing to do with my life, but this is an actual true story. When I was in the county jail, I had to write, minded my girlfriend's name on every single laundry cart, every single bunk, every single piece of property that I saw, just because at that time, that's where I was in life. It wasn't because I was a bad person. It wasn't because I was in a gang. It was just part of what I did. But I think that there's different ways, you know, because I've heard this before with the youth even having a pen, and, you know, it's like being criminalized, right? And, and maybe give them some walls to, to write on or to express themselves on or to, instead of making it, you know, there's just got to be a different way, because like I've experienced this firsthand in real life, and I think that, you know, even pointing out... And I think that, you know, even pointing out, oh, there was writing on the mattress, you know, let me document that. And and I understand, you know, that we do these inspections for a reason. But if we're doing them and documenting it, then we need to offer a solution, a realistic solution for the youth that's going to get them someplace because otherwise this whole repetitive, you know, punishment and counseling and labeling and everything else, it's just repeating the same cycle that probation continues to use over a marker or a pen. And thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. You're muted, Sean.
Uh, so I did some of the inspections and I'd like to uh say some things, maybe just to help the public. Um, who may not have been to these facilities envision this better. Um, so like graffiti, uh, I will say as a former public high school teacher, generally there's less graffiti than there was in my classroom, as diligent as I was about it. So it's not like this, you know, graffiti everywhere. There's a little bit of graffiti scattered around, and it is mostly gang-related graffiti. Uh, generally, I mean, the facilities feel very institutional, not always like a jail or a prison, but more like a a poor public high school. Um, you know, we talk about home-like environments and most young people I know uh don't tag up their living room. But they will tag up their high school, and this feels a lot more like high school than a living room. I think since you, uh, the report brings up gangs. One of the things I noticed just in the short time I've been doing these inspections is that people are talking about gangs more in the facilities now than they were before, I believe. Um, one, actually a couple of young people who I were talking to at once, they said whenever somebody new comes and there's any sort of rivalries, there's like a fight the first week and then they learn to live together. So it's, you know, it's it's sort of becoming part of the accepted culture in ways that in some ways that's encouraging that everybody gets together, uh, learns to live with each other afterwards. But it's also discouraging that there's an assumption that there has to be fights uh before they can get to a place where they, there's mutual respect. There was definitely an increased concern from staff over contraband coming in to the camps. Um, I mean, just the mention of drones, right? The idea that people are flying drones over the camps and dropping things. I don't know how much these things are actually happening. Uh, I I I believe that there have been incidents. Um, but it's fitting in, you know, people are, people are imagining this stuff happening or concerned about it and then are looking for evidence of it. So I believe that there's definitely some exaggerated concerns, but there's also real contraband problems. Uh, people throwing things over the fence at Page and Afrobar is a is a legitimate, real concern. And and may require things like more walls, uh, second sets of walls, things like that. So I just wanted to say, overall, uh, populations still feel low while you're there. Um, oh, the other thing that I heard a lot from staff was they felt like the the way that things have been going badly at the juvenile halls is starting to creep into the camps too. That students are are developing behavioral expectations in the halls uh that are different than what they had a year ago. Uh, and they're bringing those new expectations with them to camps and it's changing um the way people behave at camp as well. So there was a sense that, uh, I mean, the facilities, I think, they're institutional, they're not home-like, but they're they're pretty nice. But there is definitely amongst both youth and staff, some more social, cultural concerns that that feel like they're growing based on this inspection compared to last year's.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else? Commissioner, no?
Thank you. Um, first of all, thanks to uh Dr. Reynolds for the report and all the commissioners for doing the inspections. Just to clarify, I know there are a number of questions that were shared, and I was wondering um when we would expect, I don't know if it's a written response from probation to those questions. Um, but also just wondering if we could hear now a few more details about the the violations brought up um about Camp Rocky and the two hundred days that have that have passed? And whether probation will actually be appearing at the BSCC meeting this Thursday, given how big of an issue it is?
Ms. Kaufman, do you want to um address that issue?
Sure. I don't know about the BSCC inspection and whether we'll have representatives on um that call if that if they're going to require us to do that. But I do know in terms of the um the violations that BSCC reported. It was um, it's typically about the qualifying factors um and how they're described. So um, a staff may say that a youth um is is assaultive. Um, however, they're not describing the actual behavior of why that remains um a safety issue, even though, you know, their training, professional judgment experience knows that if they keep that youth in the environment, they're going to continue to fight. They're not specifically articulating that in terms that the BSCC would like to see. And so we have done additional training and technical assistance. Staff have been going out. Uh, my staff assistants to do additional training. Um, the, our inspector has actually done training and technical assistance. And so I believe that when she comes to do um her next, if she hasn't already reviewed all the paperwork, um, she will find that we are in compliance.
Chair Carrillo, can I address Commissioner Nong's first question about the questions? Um, so I just wanted to add that um the board actually asked us last year to have a more iterative process with probation about the inspections. That's actually been working very well, in my opinion, um in which we have immediate conversations almost always with Chief Fletcher, uh, if there are any health and welfare safety concerns uh the day of the inspection. Um, and the response is immediate. And then um also provide this list of questions, which probation will then respond in writing and then will submit all of those questions and answers with the inspection to the board. So um it just makes it clear to the board, I think. And I'd like to know whether uh Chief Fletcher agrees with with me about uh why she thinks they they did this is that we're working together, that um that we do the inspection, probation reads and reacts to the inspection, and then we get responses back to the question so that the board can see that that process is all going um in a collaborative manner. Is it, is that the same way you interpret that, Chief Fletcher?
Yes, thank you. Absolutely.
Commissioner Nong, you have a follow-up? Sure.
Thanks. Just a follow-up question. Um, I'm not sure if Ms. Kaufman was saying that she didn't have all the details on it, but I'm wondering if there's documentation about um what what steps probation took from the initial inspection. Two hundred days is just a really long time. You know, the corrective action plans um are supposed to be submitted within a specific time window. It's much shorter than that. Um, so is there any documentation we could see about the steps probation took to address these um concerns? Especially given that they had to do with with separation and room confinement?
Yeah, so typically when um there is any findings, we do do a response and a corrective action plan. And we actually have a unit that oversees any corrective action plan. So similar to your inspections, any findings will go into a corrective action plan. And then quarterly, um, all the executives and the departments that are responsible for um ensuring that those actions have been um conducted meet um to ensure we're all on track. So unfortunately, I do not, I'm actually um off the side of the freeway because I'm on my way to Berry J. Nydor. So I don't have that available, but um I definitely can forward that to Ms. Fletcher to get over to Erica and um the rest of the commissioners.
That'd be great. Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Commissioner Garcia.
Um, yeah, so when we were at Rocky for the inspection, I I believe um Ms. Reynolds has said some of this. But um, to be clear, I believe there were five people there. I didn't actually inspect the Hope Center um that day. But the five people in the Hope Center, none of them were from Rocky. So what's important, part of this is that, right, it's the other camps that are using Rocky uh for the Hope Center. Um, now, the staff at Rocky, I heard from several of them that they felt it was being overused by the other camps. Um, that there were a few people, a few young people at the uh the other camps who they just didn't know what to do with, and they were sending them to Rocky more out of uh an inability to work with these kids than anything else. So I don't know the details of what the violations were. Um, but what I can share from the inspections is definitely a sense in the staff at Rocky uh that it was being overused um by the staff at the other camps.
So is it all right if I if I go ahead and um respond to that? Um, so every time a youth gets sent over, there's what's called an as-needed multidisciplinary team. Sometimes that can't happen until the following day, depending on the time of when the incident happens and whether or not there's approval to remove the youth and send them to Camp Rocky, which takes place between uh the supervisor of the facility sending and then the supervisor who would be receiving. Um, I'm not sure originally how that was designed, that there would just be one Hope Center that all of the facilities on the east camps would utilize. But it is difficult because obviously um when the youth is is in an individual room in a in a different place where they're not um having the same enemies, they have ability to go into their own room, things like that. Other people may interpret that as they're ready to assimilate back into the facility. However, there is there is regular what we call reclassifications. If a youth is placed there on administrative um reasoning because the as-needed MDT that happens within twenty-four hours, you have mental health, you have let go, you have probation. And everybody talks about what is the most appropriate strategy to work with that youth, what's been tried, um what seems to be the issues. And, you know, sometimes unfortunately, you know, with as we have decreased facilities, we have, you know, we can't always accommodate or ensure that we have, um, you know, we try to balance issues between racial gangs, things like that in our classification process. But, you know, some of those issues still exist. And um, you know, some of the youth will say, I, if you send me back, I will fight him. I will do this. I will um do all these other things. And then we also have mental health who says that, you know, the youth may not be taking their medication. They may have just started a new medication um that ha- you know, will probably take at least, you know, a certain amount of time to um to uh help their mood disorder or whatever that may happen. And so um, like I indicated, there's a reclassification meeting. So when they're there, the supervisors require to go visit them. Um, you have the staff that are working with them. And and mind you, the staff at the Hope Center, they transition every two and a half days too. And so um they may have a different perception or may not have been been involved in the MDT and has that information. And so they'll call the other camp to get that. It should be in the the paperwork and describes everything, what the plan is for reintegration. But we're also trying to make sure that the youth is committed to safety before they return. And so right now, we're in the process of redefining that, redeveloping that. We've implemented um a new um cognitive behavioral case management. Um, and it's it's doing journaling with the youth. Um, so people may know those as thinking reports. So mental health will go in and work with them, um teach them skills to cope better, uh practice mindfulness. There may be some restorative justice that that occurs, maybe mediating between um different youth, um mediating between the youth and the staff, um extra individual therapy sessions, groups, et cetera.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Canales, you're up.
Thank you again, Commissioner Carrillo. Yes, I just want to clarify my statements earlier, you know, and the reason that I feel that this is a huge concern that we need to continue to look at is because um for the probation staff that are not aware, last Christmas Day, last December twenty-fifth, I went into a facility. And mind you, I go into the facilities often and and I'll take um, you know, different things for the youth. And the probation staff actually have always been very accommodating, uh welcoming, you know, get the youth together, and it's always worked out well. So uh, you know, I just want to say that uh this one incident, though, that did occur that I'm going to bring up, compared to the other incidents, uh, it was very different, I mean, compared to the other visits, it was very different. On Christmas Day, I went with a organization and we took in markers. And the minute we got there, we were told by several staff, you don't know these kids, the marker, they're so bad, you can't take their, you know, just the whole narrative. And we, you know, we explained, we're going to be there, and it's a, it's a activity uh that they were going to do. So we took tamales, we took for the youth and staff and and a bunch of other things. And then what ended up happening is it was the youth's choice to stay. They did not have to if they wanted to. They stayed in the dining room and the pro- the activity was on one hand, you write how you see yourself or even how you saw yourself in the past, and on this hand, how you would hope to see yourself. And um for the most part, all the staff in the dining room were very accommodating, but it, all it takes is one staff, and that staff happened to be the supervisor that was having a real problem with how they were writing on this hand. You know, some were writing their name in a form that she did not like, that she labeled as gang writing because it had a slant to it, which I still do to this day sometimes. And uh that, you know, and and different things. So while focusing on that and then threatening to strip search the youth, even though there was absolutely no markers missing, but nobody ever asked us, uh, which we could have shown the account for the markers, everybody missed what was being written on this hand. And if you would have saw the words on this hand, you would have thought, God, you know, and even the words that they were writing on this hand, which I still have copies of the project that we did. On this hand, they were writing anger, nobody cares, things like this. And on this hand, they were writing, you know, successful, good job, y- you know. And and so we ended up leaving in disbelief. It was never addressed to this day. I did immediately go into the office to raise the issue of what happened so that we can work on communication over markers and overwriting. And so, you know, when I heard it brought up on the mattress, it just goes back to that Christmas Day, which it was never resolved since it was a supervisor that reacted this way. And so therefore, so that everybody could understand why I say we need to do something different. You know, we need to look at what we're labeling as their writing, even if it's not a neighborhood name, but it's just their name in bubble writing or in slanted writing or different forms and why it is so serious. It's a very serious issue in in the way that we're reacting to the writing because it's like this war, this, you know, a- and a lot of times with the youth, what, the more you say, no, 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 you're bad, you're wrong, you're stupid. Uh, it, you know, i- i- it just becomes more of, I'm going to prove my point that you can't tell me. Instead of trying to create a narrative of success, of hope and future over a marker. And so um, thank you. I know I went on too long. I I apologize. But just for clarity's sake, I felt I should communicate that.
Thank you, Commissioner Canales. And I also hope you get an answer. I know probation's listening and they want to collaborate as much as we do. So looking forward to seeing what um what comes from this. If there's no other comments on this item, I'm going to move on to our next topic here. And okay, not seeing any. We're moving on now to item number four. Thank you for everyone who commented. We will discuss and take possible action on probation's new grievance system uh in the juvenile facilities. Here with us to present on this item is Deputy Director Luis Dominguez. Good to see you again, Mr. Dominguez, and Chief Deputy Karen Fletcher. Chief Deputy Fletcher, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chair Carrillo. Uh, we certainly appreciate the time and the opportunity to go over the new system that we are looking forward to implementation of. Uh, Mr. Dominguez oversees um our work with DOJ compliance and making sure that anything that has been outlined um in need of attention when it comes to the institutions as it relates to the Department of Justice um has been under his uh authority. He's done an incredible job moving this particular item forward. Um, and he's going to walk you through what it is and our progress thus far. So um, Mr. Dominguez, it's all yours.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, I also want to thank Wendy for providing us the procedural report. I agree with this complaint. Don't make my job a little easier here. Uh, so just before I get started, I want to clarify a couple of things. Uh, the system is not operational, okay? And we don't anticipate it being up and running or going live with it until probably January of twenty-twenty-three, but most likely February or March of twenty-twenty-three. Uh, some of the challenges that we experienced uh have been due to, during the testing phase, we we encountered some IT issues uh with the actual software. Uh, so I just want to make sure that everyone's aware of that. It's not operational. Uh, and we will not be implementing uh removing any of the current procedures that are in place. Also, we will never remove the paper form uh procedure. That is part of Title fifteen. Uh, it is mandated by BSCC, so that will always exist. What this grievance management system in the That is part of Title 15. It is mandated by BSCC, so that will always exist. What this grievance management system in effect. Effectively will be doing is enhancing. Our ability to respond, be more effective and efficient in responding to youth's needs. One of the things that that we noticed, sometimes there's a delay and we don't meet the timelines in responding to the youth needs. Sometimes there's emergencies. That require the immediate intervention of a manager or supervisor. Which sometimes there's a delay because there's a grievance that's placed in a box. The boxes, the grievance, the grievance officer takes eight hours or 24 hours for the next day to actually receive the grievance, read it. And then determine what to do or how to process that grievance. What the grievance management system effectively will provide us with. For real time data, real time grievances. So it will be implemented in three phases. So I'll go through every single phase. And give you basically what we anticipate seeing at each phase. The first phase is basically the software development. We've been working on the software development for about six months now, give or take. Initially, we thought we would go live with the system around the end of the summer, beginning of fall, around October, give or take. Unfortunately, due through, due to some of the challenges that we experienced during the testing phase. And the interface with our probation case management system, that wasn't possible. That usually happens when you technology. But our IT department is well aware of the issues and, you know, they're working to get this up and running as soon as possible. Also, in that first phase, we're going to have the policy provisions to the grievance policy. It's already up practically at its final stages. We've gone through the DOJ monitors, we presented the grievous policy to the DOJ monitors. They provided some feedback and we're just waiting to go live with the system to update it. The third portion of it will be trained for the officers. And when I say officers, I'm referring only to the grievous officers during the first phase. The grievance officers will be the ones trained and still navigate this system. Very similar to the current process and procedures. Grievance officer picks up the grievance from the box, they'll enter it into the system and then they'll go ahead and. Assign it to the appropriate person for handling. If they can handle it themselves, they'll handle it. If they can't, they'll forward it to a supervisor or a manager to address. Since a request for service, the request for service will also be entered into this grievance management system. Okay, the grievance management system will then be forwarded electronically to the appropriate agency, whether it's mental health or whether it's health services. Keep in mind that there will be an email triggering, okay? Notification to that respective agency once the system, once that grievance has been assigned. And then we will just track it from the agreement, from a probation perspective, that the service was actually delivered. What this system will also do will replace the JIGS module that's or portal that's currently in the LACO computers. We will replace it with this module. Basically, that the current JIGS process is basically just a PDF. It's a PDF that the youth files a grievance in a PDF form. This new grievance management system is actually, it's an actual grievance. They initiate the request, they submit what their what their concern is. It's either going to be a request for service, maybe a concern with the AC, the room is too hot, a complaint with the food. Or maybe there's an immediate concern, an emergency concern such as such as a pre-year case. Maybe involves some sexual assault of some sort. If that's the case, we will get immediate notification and we have to resolve it immediately. There will not be a delay like there normally is right now. 24 hours or 16 hours for the next day to address that. If we need to protect that youth, remove the youth, separate the youth. Maybe it's an issue with the staff, if we need to address that, that gives us real time information to address. We have two user guides. We have one for staff. That we've trained the officers on and then we have one for youth. As as outlined in your procedure report. The youth will be orientated on the process and will be provided a user guide. Okay, in addition, for those youth who are already at the facility, they will be they will be provided with a user guide and trained within the respective units. So that will be the first phase. Phase two of it, which we we plan on implementing and having up and running by fall of 2023. Will be any enhancements or customizations that we need to do to the current software. Okay, we've already identified a few issues. We're missing a step in the current software, but we don't want to hold up the going live date that we're going to have to resolve. And in addition, in that phase two, we will give access to all of the other officers and to our partner agencies. To be able to file grievances on behalf of the youth as well. So they'll have that ability as well. In phase three, which we're concurrently working on, is actually procuring kiosk machines. Okay, that's going to, that takes a longer, it's going to be a longer process. We have to go through the county's procurement process through an RFP process, which is a request proposal. We can't engage with any of the vendors until we've gone through the request for proposal process. As a result of that, we don't know how long it will take. Whoever the vendor, whichever vendor is selected, we don't know how long it will take for them to design the kiosk machine. That will be able to house this software and then we also have to make sure that the kiosk machines are tamper resistant. So that may, that could take up to eight months just in in the design phase and the procurement phase part a little longer. So that's why we put an estimated timeline in March 2024. To be up and running with that portion of it. The good thing about this grievance management system, it gives us, we have a dashboard, okay? At any time, if I'm a supervisor or manager, I could go to the grievance dashboard. And look at all the grievances that have been submitted from my respective facility or my respective unit and manage those grievances accordingly. There's alerts that trigger, make sure that we meet the timeframes. If it's two days that we have to respond back. The system is going to alert us, send an email alerting us at work, either. In jeopardy, you're not meeting the timeline or we haven't addressed it or it needs to be addressed. It will also go to the supervisor and to the manager. We also get the real time data, as I said, if it's a pre-year incident, okay, and we have to address something immediately, I protect a youth. Remove her from a certain unit or from a dangerous situation, then we'll do that as well. Internal time system, as I indicated, you know, there's embedded timers in the in the system. To ensure that we actually meet the timelines required by our policy, which is usually two days per stage. If it's an emergency grievance, it's six hours. Scanning of additional documentation. This system allows you to scan additional documentation and connect it to the actual system. Okay, so if a youth requests grievance about, let's say, food and they say. There's something wrong with the food, it didn't taste well, or there was something in it that I didn't like. An officer could take a picture of it and we could take that picture and we could scan it and add it to to the actual database as well. Comprehensive data storage. We will, whatever we we enter into the system, it will be housed indefinitely. We can identify trends. We can manage issues within the facility. We can identify issues with it, whether it's in one respective unit, whether it's a facility issue. So that is something I say we we lack in and some of your concerns and we share the same concerns. We don't always produce data or analytics in a timely manner. This system will address that and hopefully make it easy. I'm going to try and address some of the questions that you may have. Who will have access to the system? The system is basically a web based program that can be accessed through any computer. It will be on the LACO computers for, that will be a module portal for the youth. And an application for the officers that they could access through a web system. For right now, it'll only be the grievance officers. They will be responsible for actually pulling grievances from the actual database that locked box and then it will be entered into the case management system. Okay, eventually our partner, county partners will also have access to the system. And they can also file grievances on behalf of the youth. Oftentimes, there could be a therapy session that the youth may be having with a mental health therapist or the counselor. Or with a nurse or somebody and they make an allegation and they want to file a grievance or they have a concern or complaint. Our county partners could go ahead and assist them. How will the grievance officers be notified? It's an email that gets triggered, okay, to the grievance team, not just one particular officer. So it goes to a team. So if someone's off on a particular date, there's someone else that's going to receive it. The supervisor or the manager will also can receive a copy of it if they want them to look at it. Okay, full implementations, as I said, will be in 2024. We anticipate having everyone trained by then. We anticipate making any modifications or enhancements to. The grievance software in the fall of 2023. And hopefully we can secure the kiosk machines by 2024. The kiosk will be placed in every single day room within the juvenile halls and then the dorms within the camps. So they will have the ability to just go into the kiosk. Type in what they are requesting, whether it's a grievance or a request for service. The request for service will go to the respective agency, whether it's mental health or health services. And the grievance will come to probation. We will also get a copy of the request for services to ensure that we can follow up. As a parent agency responsible for for the well being of the youth, we need to make sure that that service was provided to that youth. I think that's basically it. It's a general overview. We have a long way to go before we actually implement it, but we're making progress. We should be up and running, like I said, going live by February, March of 2023. Welcome any questions that you may have if I haven't already answered.
Okay, thank you so much. Wendy, do we have any written or live public comments for this item?
There's nobody with their hands up. If you'd like to make a public comment on this item about the grievances, please click on the raise your hand function or dial star three on your phone. We'll give it just a second. Danny. Turning it back to you.
Thank you, Wendy, and welcome, Dawn. It's good to see you. Commissioners, I'm looking over for any raised hands to address to Mr. Dominguez about this important issue. In the meantime, I'll ask you a question, Mr. Dominguez. Is there? Well, yeah, I guess I'll ask it this way. Is there any grievances that are either backlog or, you know. Go back even a year or 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 longer that hasn't haven't been addressed or that they're pending that might make it into the system? Or are these grievances are sort of moving forward will be entered?
So I don't have any information on current recent grievances that may have been filed. I will tell you that this is one area that we actually do a really good job. We experience challenges in many areas within the department and within BSCC and DOJ, and I'll be the first one to admit that. But this is one area that that I really have to give credit to to the supervisors, the grievance officers. They do an extremely good job in addressing the grievance system, responding to the youth, providing them with, meeting the timelines. And tracking this and logging it. The problem with it is that it's an Excel spreadsheet, basically what we're doing in logging it. I mean, we will provide some stuff in the peer system, but it's basically an Excel spreadsheet. We try to do analytics and data out of Excel spreadsheet, identify trends, trends, and it's very, very challenging and difficult. This system will really, really assist us in addressing the areas where I think we we've fallen short, the deficiencies. But this is one area that I don't believe that there were any grievances of that nature would exist. I think we do a great job in in addressing grievances for the youth. Just takes us a little longer than we would like.
Thank you for that. Now, follow up question. You know, using your example about the food, you know, something was in the food or the food didn't taste the way they were expecting to taste. You know, I I get that. I'm sure that's that's maybe some or majority of your of your grievances, but what happens when there is a grievance about a staff member? That is more serious? Is there an internal policy, maybe an outside agency that handles those or is that still dealt with through probation?
So it it depends on the nature of the incident. If it's an egregious incident, it gets referred out to to an outside agency. If it's an internal matter that can be addressed by our own internal affairs office, it will be handled internally. It all depends on the nature, on a case by case basis. There are, there have been situations that have gone directly to law enforcement. We do have to file a SCAR suspected child abuse report on every single incident, so that gets reported too. Sometimes we file it to the hotline, sometimes we call it a law enforcement agency directly and file it with the law enforcement. But yes, it depends on the nature of the.
Is that is that a new policy or is this is one that's been around for a while?
This has been around for several years.
Okay, and one last thing before I pass it over to my my colleague, Commissioner Garciales. Mr. Dominguez, this kiosk that you're referring to that will be in the day room, can you give us a visual what that would look like?
So I'll do my best interpretation because we we haven't engaged with anyone, we're not allowed to engage with a vendor of any sort. I engage being, how would I say it? It it's a solid, you know, device, which is a kiosk, it will be hanging up on on the actual wall of the unit. It's not a full kiosk that we envisioned. We want one that will be hanging probably on the wall. We haven't decided whether we will be using the track ball or a touchscreen. We would have to have those conversations with the vendor, whatever is more tamper resistant. And it could, you know, sometimes there's incidents within the facilities, something that could actually, you know. Well, if something was to happen, if someone was to throw something at it, a chair or whatever the case may be, that it actually doesn't break or whatever.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Garciales, you're up.
Thank you. Mr. Dominguez, about the question that was just asked about. A backlog or one of the things that's happened during several of our inspections. Is that we've been told that there have been errors in JIGS and that there's been no grievances. For, you know, a month or more that have made it out of the jig system into the hands of the people who handle grievances. Is that right? And is that consistent with what you were just saying?
I I don't have access to to those grievances and and I'm not involved in the in the process once it's reported or the. Or youth files a grievance within JIGS. But I could certainly follow up on it. I don't have a problem following up and making sure that if. There is a backlog that is being addressed or where we are, I'm not sure if if someone else, Chief Fletcher or Chief Kaufman may have something.
My understanding is the, oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, I I'm sorry. I I don't have any of those specifics, but certainly we can follow up on all the institutions.
Yeah, my understanding is that the problem has been solved. But I I I only bring it up because it sounded to me like you were saying that they've been doing a great job, there have been no mistakes, there have been no problems, when in fact, when we've done inspections. There have been very serious problems in the past.
So I apologize if I've been spoke, but I'm speaking based on my experience as the bureau chief prior to JIGS of camps. This is one area and, you know, overseeing DOJ, this is one area where we've actually excelled in the past. And this is one area where our grievance officers have done an excellent job. Now, if there's some technology concerns or technical difficulties with the jig system itself. That's something that I wasn't pretty too aware of. And something I'm definitely looking to.
Wendy, you want to chime in?
I was actually just going to say thank you very much for this report. I'm of course excited about the idea of having better accessibility to make grievances. Although what's most exciting to me, and I think I speak for my colleague, Jennifer Ochoa Garcia, who's been looking at this, is. What you talked about about the ability of the department to review trends and the dashboard and this information getting out of the institutions into. A way that it can be researched and you can look at at different concepts. Can you talk a little bit more about. Whether I'm being overly optimistic or is that actually what you're hoping to be able to get out of this this new system?
No, that's actually exactly what we're hoping to get out of the system. Oftentimes, when we identify trends, we could get ahead of incidents from escalating. That seems to be some of the challenges that we sometimes experience. Working, being in this business for 25 years and working with youth, you know, sometimes, you know, there's there's high levels of anxiety with with our young men and young women, okay? Sometimes it's as simple as they don't know whether when their next court date is. They probably could just come back from court and they're not really aware of what's going on with, what happened in court, what happened with the case. When you have an officer who's supervising eight youths by himself, it's difficult to address all of the questions or get on the computer and double check for the youth or make a phone call. We can't immediately address. So incidents escalate because there's a high level of anxiety. One of the things in addition to identifying trends, identifying issues, whether it's food, whether it's AC, whether it's. Every youth complaining about a specific staff or specific youth within one unit. Is what I envision with the system is hopefully they have access to some of their personal information, court decisions, records. And they could just go into this kiosk machines and they'll deviate some of that anxiety and concerns that they may have. This is something that that we're still discussing. Obviously, there are security concerns and everything. But each youth will be assigned their own personal login information. Once the kiosks are up and running, they will have a way of, you know. In in my opinion, one of the reasons we started exploring. in, in my opinion, one of the reasons we started exploring this also was to give you additional ways of, of filing grievances and hopefully be a, a way of being more confidential or maintaining confidentiality. Because by them approaching the kiosk machine, other youth or staff really don't know why the stu- the youth is approaching the kiosk machine. It could be to request a service. It could be to look at, at, at some type of information regarding the case. It could be to actually file a grievance. That's what we're trying to address, uh, and probably also be, you know, more responsive, more effective and efficient and responsive to the kids' needs. Uh, we, as much as we want our grievance officers to address grievances within their shift, it's not always possible. Sometimes they have to wait till the next day, uh, and sometimes it has to be escalated. Uh, but with this system, I, I think we will be able to make a, a difference and alleviate some of the concerns.
Thank you for that. I also would just like to clarify for the commission and the public that, um, within probation, the use of the word grievance is a very special term that is associated with complaints, grievances that are made within the institutions by young people who are in the institutions. Um, and the probation oversight commission is specifically actually even in the ordinance, uh, uh, talks about our role in, uh, the grievance procedure and overseeing grievances. Um, we also are looking at the complaint process, which is everything that's not a grievance. Um, so none of the things that, uh, that, uh, Mr. Dominguez is discussing today, but, um, the complaints that are made by folks who are on field probation, whether they be juveniles or adults, um, a complaint that might be made by a family member about something that's happening in a facility. So, uh, the probation oversight commission is also, uh, had a role in looking into that process and we look forward to an update on that, um, in the near future. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Wendy, thank you, Mr. Dominguez. Commissioner, no other hands. I'm gonna move on to our next agenda item. Okay, not seeing any. Thank you so much. Moving on now to item number five, we will discuss and take appropriate action if needed on the progress the Los Angeles County Probation Department has made regarding site selection and programming for youth disposition to secure track and future plans for additional S Y T F sites. Ms. Fletcher, it's good to see you. Please proceed with this item.
Thank you very much, Chair Correio. So I am happy to report this past Thursday, we successfully moved four more young people from Berry J to Campus Kilpatrick. Um, we had H D A, D M H, uh, ARC and our own staff at Kilpatrick as well as our Berry J Secure Youth Track Team all involved in that. Those young men will integrate into, um, the Oak Cottage, which is where our first group of six young men are housed. Um, so it is going well. It was very successful on Thursday, as was it, uh, over the weekend as well. So they are settling in. It was very nice to see that our young men who have been there since September fourteenth took the lead and, and really did a tour and an orientation, uh, if you will, uh, for the new young men coming in. So it was a nice, uh, transfer. We're continuing to work, um, with the BSCC and some upgrades that need to happen at Campus Kilpatrick. Uh, we did move those additional four youth over without increasing our staffing levels at Kilpatrick. So we had agreed to mitigate some of the challenges that we were facing with Title twenty-four by providing one-on-one supervision. Um, we were able to move those additional four without increasing staffing. When you start to increase, uh, staffing with those few youth, it, it does become crowded. Um, so our staff are doing a really good job, uh, with supporting those young people. We do believe that we are still on track for doing some of the safety upgrades that should be in place by the end of November. So by our next, uh, meeting, hopefully we'll have a, a more solid update on that progress. Um, but we're continuing to look at how our young men are doing there, how they're integrating into an open dorm and with that, that additional programming that we are moving from Berry J to Kilpatrick, um, so that we can have further discussions about how we move additional youth in the near future. So, um, our first group, we did a thirty-day look at how well they, they did, um, and that is something that we chose to do internally. Um, and they did very well. So we will continue to monitor, um, not wait an additional thirty days. If we feel that we are in a position safety-wise and programming-wise for additional young men to move, we will absolutely do that. And happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Wendy, do you have any written or live public comments for this item?
I don't see any hands. If anyone would like to make public comment, please, uh, raise your hand using the raise your hand function or dial star three on your phone. We will give it just a second. I don't see anyone who's in queue yet. Janay, nobody signed up to make public comment. Actually, uh, we did have a written public comment, um, on this item, uh, which will be attached to the agenda and sent to, um, uh, commissioners. Nobody else in line, Janay?
That is correct.
Okay, I'll turn it back over to you.
Thank you. Okay, I see one hand up. Commissioner Meredith, you're up.
Yeah, I just have a question regarding Camp Scott. I noticed that the court, uh, rejected the C D S Santa Frieda's petition, uh, to block some action there. But the county council's response was that no such decision had been made on using that as a site for the secure, secure track youth. So I just was trying to get a status, a factual status on what is going on with Camp Scott.
So we actually can weigh in with county council and provide the P O C with a response, not, um, in a position to provide that today.
Okay, I just reading in the paper, so I thought maybe we had an update.
We can get that for you.
Anyone else? Okay, I think we'll be, uh, moving on. Ms. Fletcher, thank you so much for that update.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item number six, commissioners and P O C staff only. Please note that, um, we do not take public comments on matters that are not posted on this agenda here. So are there any matters not posted on the agenda to discuss or to place in a future meeting agenda for action? And looking at.
Uh, I will just say we have another meeting on Wednesday. Um, please join us. Uh, that one starts at noon and, and we will be, uh, talking about our, um, uh, some really great, uh, topics, including our O C Spray Report. Uh, and, um, I am really thankful to the department for their willingness to participate in, uh, today's meeting and Wednesday's meeting. So I appreciate that. And of course, to all of you commissioners. So, um, also, we, uh, are seeking two new commissioners at large. Uh, Superbissorial District Two will be appointing, uh, their own commissioner, uh, to replace Commissioner Yamashiro. But Commissioners Dupree and Nong will be replaced using an at-large selection process. And, um, also on the agenda on Wednesday will be a discussion about how we, um, create a committee to, uh, to do that process. But the application is live. I'm sure that Janay is going to put it in the comment section. And if you'd like to apply, uh, you're welcome to, uh, look at the information about the bulletin and we'd love to have as many applications as possible. So please, uh, share it widely. That's all I have.
Thank you, Wendy. Uh, Don, you're up.
That was a leftover.
Okay, Don. Um, two things that I want to just add. Um, from hearing, um, Mr. Dominguez bring something up that triggered this is that, you know, maybe this is just more of a call out for retired attorney or another justice advocate, uh, professional who can potentially create, uh, one more nonprofit, who can go in and give lessons about the procedures at, uh, that youth might be going through, like almost like a educational sort of step-by-step, not to give advice obviously, but to, uh, inform youth, uh, even their parents about, you know, why they're going through, what they're going through. I think it's very necessary. I can think about my own journey, uh, wishing someone would have given me some sort of cheat sheet about what's, what's happening. So maybe sort of a call out to, um, a potential item, but also for someone who might be interested in maybe creating something that, uh, one or maybe a group of people can, can put together. Um, and another thing, I think this is more for P O C. I'm also thinking about something that was said that triggers, um, potentially a town hall for family members who have their children in juvenile halls right now and in the camps, just to get an, uh, a bird's eye view from a guardian or a parent about what they think they're, what they think, um, the experience of their youth has been so far. And, um, cause you know, they're, they're definitely getting the phone calls from those on the inside and what we can do better. So sort of finding a way to facilitate that. And I see, uh, Commissioner Dupree's hand up. Is that? Is that a hyphenated name now? Dupree, is it Waters or Watts or?
Watson, Watson.
Okay, I just see W T.
It's been hyphenated for a while. I just decided to start actually, um, putting it on the label, you know, you have to change all the things anyway. Um, hi, everyone, and thank you for all the great, uh, presentations today. I apologize for not being on camera as, um, every time I am, my face freezes. So I wanted to spare you all that. Um, but I did have a question about, um, access, this is really for, um, any probation representatives on, about, um, programs, volunteer services, um, coming in to provide programming for the young people, um, currently detained. I just, I, I know that the Young Women's Freedom Center has been having maybe some issues, um, you know, getting all of the things sorted out to make that happen and wondering where we are with processes for volunteers. Is it still happening through the VISTO process? Is there an, an updated, um, way of navigating that? Uh, just curious if, what, what's happening there?
Sure, I'd be happy to address that. So, um, yes, it is happening through VISTO. What we have also done is tried to accommodate, um, kind of last-minute volunteers that are coming in through some of our other providers, um, and processing those backgrounds as quickly as we can. So all of that is happening, um, with respect to the Young Women's Freedom Center. They have come in a couple of times as volunteers. I think, uh, oftentimes what delays programming is the R F P process that is often required and it's such a lengthy process. Um, so certainly trying to work with that provider in particular, um, as well as others to get through that process, uh, so that, um, they are regulars in our institutions. Uh, but certainly we have been able to accommodate them through a volunteer process.
Okay, so there, I, I get it. So, but the volunteer going, good, going through the R F, I think you said R F P, where they might become a vendor, that doesn't interfere with them just coming in as volunteers? They could come in as volunteers until that process is finalized. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks, everyone. Moving on now to item number seven. This is an invitation for members of the public to address the commission on items not on the agenda. Wendy, please facilitate, facilitate this public comments for us.
I will happily facilitate. Also incredible job, commissioners, and getting done on time today. Thank you. Uh, I don't see any hands. If you'd like to make public comment on an item not on the agenda, please raise your hand or dial star three on your phone. No hands.
Oh, okay, is that?
Yeah, I think we can move on.
Okay, is there, okay, well, this is Commissioner Dupree, Watson, is that, do you want to jump in or is that, I see your hand is up. I know it's for the public, but I just don't want to.
That's leftover.
Okay, got it. Okay, doki. All right, um, this is our final, uh, item here. Thank you, uh, for your comments. As a quick reminder, be sure to follow us on social media at L A County P O C. Also subscribe to our new YouTube channel by searching Probation Oversight Commission and click and subscribe to receive reminders about our upcoming meetings. Visit our website at P O C dot L A County dot gov to subscribe to our email listing. It is now twelve fifty-eight and I adjourn this meeting. Thanks, everyone. Have a great day.
Thank you.